It's 8:30. I'll call this morning's meeting to order. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have the minutes from December 19th and 26th.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve. And a second. Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Darren. Item, request for approval of contract for assistant county attorneys. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me this morning. Did anybody see that game on Sunday?
Did anyone see the game? I think they all saw it.
No, the Pittsburgh game. That was horrible. The other game.
I was gonna say.
Yeah. Well, thanks for having me today. What I want to do is ask for the signature on the attorney's contract. We met with them two or three times. We didn't have a lot of things that they were requesting aside from wage increases. We did come down with a two and a half, two and two for 2018, 19, and 20 respectively. And the one sticking point that we did have, that we worked through, was the Labor Management Insurance Committee meeting of where they would defer benefit decisions to the Labor Management Insurance Committee, which we have talked about before. We have that in two contracts already, language to that respect, and it's now also in this contract as well. Right now, we have three more contracts that are outstanding, the deputies, the social workers, and the case aides. The deputies, we're meeting again tomorrow for our third negotiation, I believe. And unfortunately, with the social workers and case aides, we are going to mediation on February 1st to try to get their contract ratified. So that's where we're at. So the attorneys is the first one that we've got a TA from the attorneys on so far.
So the contract is for 2018, 2019, 2020?
Correct.
And so it's a 2.5 in 18, a 2 in 19, and a 2 in 20?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Let me just sign it.
Yep, thanks. All right, now we have a request from the AMC for approval of the resolution for behavioral
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. What you have before you in your packet was a request from the Association of Minnesota Counties, which you folks are a party of, and you probably had some discussion of this at your annual meeting, but AMC membership has identified the mental health bonding as one of the top legislative priorities. And I certainly won't read the letter that enclosed in the packet from AMC, but I think all of you are aware, especially working with this last, or the jail, the correctional facility project and the behavioral health issues that we've talked about in regards to the new correctional facility, you know the problems that this state and this country are having with behavioral health issues. And the AMC has talked about it a lot too, I guess, and they're asking the state for some bonding dollars to actually build some facilities to handle some of these things. And with me today is Pat Boyer, and she deals with the behavioral health issues over in the social services. Frankly, knowing Pat, she has an opinion in regards to this, and I would ask for her assistance on this.
Welcome, Pat.
Okay, okay. So how, the region four counties did get together on a phone call, and they are very supportive of having this regional behavioral health crisis. What happens out in community is we have crisis services, but we don't have beds for people to go to. So how this has really impacted Clay County is in 2016, we had about 10 people at a NOCA that did not meet level of care. And so until we could get them out of there and find a provider, the county paid full cost for those people there. In 2017, we got it down to about five people, but still, as soon as they meet level of care as determined by a doctor, then it's the county, the county has to pay 100%. And if we would have a place to bring these people to until we can find an appropriate provider, that would save a lot of county dollars. And so, yeah, we will. And the other part of it is diverting people from going there in the first place. Many times, these people have challenging behaviors, and so providers don't want to deal with some of those on criminal backgrounds. They're tough clients. So this would allow us to bring them to a place where we're not getting charged the full level of care, plus we can focus on getting them to the right provider for their treatment.
Right. Well, I appreciate that AMC is taking action on this, because I think all of us have been in many discussions about the need for the state to maybe step up and help with the cost on this, so it's a good thing.
I mentioned last week too, that rural Minnesota counties has also set this as a priority to support AMC on it for this coming year for legislative action, so they're gonna be doing some heavy lobbying to support this also.
And I know Lakeland has also done some significant lobbying about if we're closing these facilities, we need to open some areas and options back up, because really, from their standpoint and our standpoint, we need to find beds. Kevin?
Good morning, Pat.
Good morning.
The position that AMC is asking us to support here, have we discussed to what level of bonding funds we're looking for to?
That I've not heard.
Okay. You know, it's one thing to support a resolution, but it's another thing to be able to go in there and say what you're looking for in terms of dollars and how they're gonna be used. And I don't see a lot of that here. It's, I like the concept, I mean, our board chair said that we all agree with that, but if we're into a bonding session, what are we asking for? So, for example, when we go there in the last part of February and early March, and we talk to our legislatures, you know, regarding capital funding, what are we asking for? So I guess I...
I'm thinking the region four directors are getting together fairly soon to come up with that.
Okay. So when you get that information, I think that would be helpful for us to, if we're gonna go there and deal with this, we need to get a little bit specific on what we're looking for, I guess.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I have one question, I guess for Pat. If, and I realize this is in the infant stage to see, but at times when there is a commitment, a civil commitment to a facility, and they do not deem the person criminally, I'll say insane or something, but yet they are civilly committed, and we have tended to pick up the whole bill, and sometimes it's been $1,800 a day or something like that, would this possibly facilitate a little bit of that, or could it, do you think?
So you're thinking maybe a treat to competency program?
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
Yeah.
Possibly. That's been one of the ideas that has been talked about, is the need for that, because, yeah, we've had...
I know that's a big concern from the county expense.
Well, I think there's lots to be done, but I think to have the support of all the counties would be really instrumental. Commissioner Haney, did you have a question?
I have a question. I understand that in the correctional facility that's being constructed, we have 15 behavioral health beds in there. Does that, what this is qualified, I mean, does that qualify for this kind of a situation?
No, no, because those are people that have a criminal offense, whereas the ones for this are people that are coming out of a NOCA that, well, I guess if it was a treat to competency, it might be that issue, but it's usually people that just need treatment for mental illness, so they're civilly committed because they're in danger of hurting themselves or someone else if not civilly committed.
Without a crime.
And our behavioral health unit will not accept something like that?
No, at our jail?
Yeah.
No, because there's a crime involved.
There has to be a crime involved.
Yeah.
All right. It just seems strange, they were closing places down. Now we're hurting, now we're modeling, we wanna build places. Somewhere around the line, we shouldn't have closed them down, I think.
That's right.
The state did that many, many years ago, closed everything down.
Yeah, I realize that, it's just now we're fighting to have them open.
It's just shocking.
Are you referring to the place at Fergus Falls that was open for many years?
One of them. One of them, yeah.
So we have a resolution 2018-6. Is there any further comments or questions?
I'll move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
And a second. What do you think further? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Pat.
Yep, yep, and I'll pass one.
Thank you, yes, you win, please.
We'll move into our request for approval of contract amendment number three.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the amendment to, the amendment number three to the contract was for the contract that we had with Houston Engineering to lay out the campus and look at the infrastructure and the power planning and different things, and the looping process. And they ran into some difficulties, which is not surprising, I guess, in laying out and the looping issue that takes place around this campus. And they are requiring some additional fees, Houston Engineering is, and I do know they spent quite a bit more time. Part of this was the storm drain and also the looping for the electrical, so there was a couple of things that were involved here. So there is some adjustments to their, this, and Mike Love is the one, I don't think he is here this morning, he sent this over, and so I'm asking for your approval for some additional costs for Houston Engineering and their design.
Yep.
You know, if I can, I kinda, it was a, quite a complex project to begin with, and to, you know, this deals with everything that goes around with the two new blocks that we had, and so it, the dollar amounts that we're talking about here, I can certainly see that as being reasonable for the complexity of what they started with compared to what finally had to be done, so I certainly support this.
And just for note, the not to exceed is $6,000. The first county campus replat would be estimated at $4,500, and the private utility relocation is estimated at $1,500?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve the amendment?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Continuing the discussion on our expansions, discussion on remodeling the facility, family service center to accommodate juvenile probation and extension. Georgia, are you part of?
She's part of this.
Presentation?
She's a big part of it.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Are you kicking this off, or is...
Uh, Brian's gonna kick. I'll be the backup. I'm not near you.
All right, Brian.
Okay, Madam Chair, what you have, when I passed out, maybe I better back up just a little bit. You have had several presentations in regards to the juvenile expansion. In the juvenile expansion, it will require the administration from the juvenile center moving out, and also they lease out space to probation. Part of that probation is county probation, part of that probation is state probation. And the county probation is what we've found space over in the family service center for them. And also, with the juvenile administration moving into the wing of the family service center, we are also moving extension over to the other side. The state auditing office is moving out of the family service center. So what we're doing is, the state auditors are moving out, we're moving the extension over into their space, we have to do some remodeling in there, and that is the first floor remodeling, where it says regional extension. The probation is moving, the county probation, juvenile probation is probably a better explanation of it, is moving up to second floor. And they need quite a bit of remodeling to make that facility work for them. And then there's, this is not related to the other, but the public defenders, we need to put a wall in, on the floor four, and you'll see that's $2,100. So we also looked at putting in a restroom, which was a request of the county probation, because they do urinalysis and different things in the, and, but there is a restroom that's fairly close in the hallway there, so we asked for a separate bid on the restroom. So I should say quote, because this is not a bid, this is quotes. So for those, now, this does not involve the remodeling of the administrative offices that I mentioned, that it will be coming over. This is only to get moving on this, because we're, it's starting to be time sensitive on this, and we need, if we're moving forward with this project, we need to move forward with some of these remodelings, because it has a domino effect as to people moving around. So Georgia's been working on this very, very diligently with Carrie from Burns Architect, and I think we have some reasonable costs in front of us, and we still have one quote coming in, but what we'd like to do today is discuss this, answer any questions that you may have on what we're doing here. We did meet, Commissioner Haney was not able to attend, but Commissioner Gross did meet with, well, is part of the capital improvement committee on the campus, and we met last Wednesday, I think it was.
It was a Tuesday as well.
Tuesday. And we went over these things. These prices are quite a bit cheaper than what we discussed there, we had an earlier estimate on it. And so what we're asking for today, I think, is, I think we're leaving the restroom out, because that's $17,000, almost $18,000. And what I'd like to ask for is approval, well, and the other thing within this, these quotes, they are reusing doors, and if they find that they cannot use or reuse a door that they're taking out or something, there will be some additional costs in this. So you'll see the lowest bid here is $33,911. And I think it would be appropriate if we were to say that, if you were to authorize this up to $35,000 right now, because we have another bid coming, or another quote coming in, and that would allow a little bit of room for a door change or something on this, because we need to get started with this. I'd like to be more exact on it, but we got these figures this morning, and that's why they weren't included in your packet and things, because, but I think you know the need here in moving forward, and I think we're getting quite a bit for our money here, so. And the reason why that is, it's a downtime right now in the construction industry because of the weather, so we can pull somebody in to get started on this. It only takes them a couple, maybe month and a half to do this, right, Georgia?
I think they're projecting four weeks.
Four weeks.
And it might be less if we opt to pull without the restroom.
Well, I know that several of the commissioners at this table have been on different committees that have talked about the need for that specific expansion, so I think this is warranted from those discussions. Are there any questions or comments on these quotes?
Well, I think, you know, being on the committee, that when I look at all the movement around that we plan on doing, this is a, you know, this isn't, I mean, yes, that's a lot of money, $33,000 is money, but for what we're gonna do, moving probation around, moving regional extension around, auditors have to move out, and all this move that's going on, I mean, I'm sorry, to say that $33,000 isn't that much, and I don't, I really don't think it is. I mean, it is an amount of money, but for what we're gonna do, I think it's a good
Maybe I should include, Madam Chair, as well as, and I should have included it, what we're looking at is here for payment. We do have Georgia, and I can't tell you the exact amounts right now, because we're working through that. Georgia is looking at her budget and what she feels that she can experience as far as the charges that she charges for rent. And you budget about $30,000 a year for juvenile, but they're adding a little more space, so we have to really look at that. We do have some capital improvement funds that could be utilized for this. And I've also talked to Steve, and wondering if some of those dollars can be included in the juvenile remodeling because of the movement issue and things. So it's kind of a combination of three sources we're looking at here, so, and I wish I could break it down for you right now, but we're gonna do what we feel is fair, and we'll certainly let you know what those are.
I'll move to approve up to $35,000 for the project.
We have a motion to approve, a budget of up to $35,000?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Commissioner Campbell.
Yes. Good morning, Georgia.
Good morning.
The, when we move these different entities to the new locations, are we asking for a, an extension of their lease?
For the current ones, like probation, county probation?
And also, extension?
Extension, their lease goes till 2022 currently, so we would just be modifying their existing lease.
Okay. And probation, what's the, do they...
Being their county agency, they don't really have an official lease agreement, but they would be paying rent.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right, and then, Brian, in terms of the cost breakdown, I agree that all of this is being done because of the expansion of the regional juvenile center, and so I do think it would be appropriate that we figure out some portion of that that is charged to the regional facility as part of the expansion project. I think that's only fair that, you know, had it not been for this expansion, we wouldn't, Clay County wouldn't be going through this expense on their own, and so I do believe it's appropriate that our other members do help a little bit in that regard, so. If we can come up with something that's logical, that would be good. And we can work with Steve and Grant and our subcommittee on that, but...
Any other comments or discussion? Is there a specific piece of these that we will do first?
Yes, Madam Chair. Georgia, would you?
As far as, oh, the layout of the project itself, the second floors already been vacated, so we're ready to go on that, they can start that at any time. The state auditors are in the process of moving out, and they'll just kinda move down there once they get to second floor.
Okay. Well, I think in terms of time sensitivity, I think it's important that we move forward. So we do have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And let us know, as you hear. All right, moving into our discussion on county fee structures. Thank you for getting this to us, I know we had requested that we have some more information in January, so thanks for following up on that.
Yes, well, thank you, Madam Chair. And what you have before you, it was in your packet, there were several pages of the fees that Clay County does charge, and it shows that it's, whether it's a county set fee or whether it's a state set fee. And I don't know if you've had the time to go through this or not, but there, it's pretty hard just to look at the fee without deciding what it's used for, and is it satisfactory, covering the costs, and should it be increased or not? And our thought was to give you this information now, as you have requested, and then we are in the process of scheduling department presentations to the board, they do that every year, and we do it kind of in January, February. And we thought that part of the presentation from the department, if they do charge fees for their services, that they discuss that at that time, so you guys can get the explanation as to why they need an increase, why it should stay the same, why it hasn't increased since 2005, things along those lines. So that was kind of the path that we were projecting, if that's satisfactory.
Any comments from the board on that schedule? Is that satisfactory to you?
Well, I guess if they're gonna come and talk to us about these fees, now, I've just looked at some of the fees, you know, I'll take the first one, auctioneer's license. You know, there's all kinds of businesses in this county. You know, why do we make an auctioneer? Why does he need a license? I mean, there's a, you, food place, and, I mean, I look at all the other businesses that are, they're not listed on here, unless I'm missing them, you know, but I just thought, to be an auctioneer, you have to have a license. It's just, I don't know. I mean, why don't you need a license for everything that you do in this?
That's a good question for the auditor transfer.
Some might maintain that you do need a license for about anything that you do.
Yeah, well, I just thought that was sort of, sort of strange just to pick on, looked like one business we're gonna say they...
I think maybe an answer to that is the fact that they are, each one is unique in a one-time deal. It's similar to somebody who might have to have a vendor's license to be at a street fair or something like that. It's, they're kind of unique, because every auction is an individual one-time sale, and so I think it's more of to, I'm assuming that if you're gonna, we want you to be licensed to be an auctioneer in our county for the protection of our citizens.
Collection of finances.
Huh?
Especially if you're collecting financial...
Yeah, yeah, and just to make sure that, you know, I'm assuming that there's some work going, done, being done to make sure that there are, you know, whether it's a criminal background check or something that goes on, I think it's a minimum, but I agree with you that it's odd that it's listed, like no others are, but...
I mean, is it yearly? Of course, we can ask that question later. I don't know whether it's a yearly fee or a one-time fee.
Yeah, but I, and I, Brian, I do, I do like, I do like the fact that each, each department will come and explain those fees.
Yeah.
Because there's some that I think are appropriate, and as Commissioner Moeller
would point out a long time ago, some, if they haven't been raised for a long time, should they be tied to, to cost, you know, cost of living type of deals. But more important, more importantly to me is, is that are we, are we collecting the appropriate dollars for our, for our staff time to deal with the work that needs to be done?
Right.
That's, to me, that's the issue. And in some regards, I, I think we have to be very careful when it comes to the operations of our business people in this community, that we don't overburden them either. So I, you know, so that it's a, it's a, we've got to watch that closely.
Right. And, and Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think auctioneer license is a very good example of that. I, you're absolutely right. I think since you're dealing with finances and advertising and collecting money, I'm sure there's a bond that's required.
Does the state require the license?
And I would say that this is a statute that says you will issue a.
Might be up to us to set the fee, but the state may require the license.
Right.
And auctioneers want to be licensed to give them some credibility, so not anybody can just say, I'm an auctioneer.
That's right.
Might be able to talk fast.
Well, I don't think it's appropriate that, you know, we've all said that we don't want to overburden people, specifically businesses with new taxes. However, we have burdened everyone with increases to our levy every single year. And, and the one that sticks out to me is if we're gonna have an annual overweight permit for highway, that was set in nineteen eighty, the damage done to the roads is far greater than a hundred dollars. So I, I just think it has to be fair and equitable, and having all of the departments come and have a discussion with us, I think, is appropriate.
I think, I mean, when you're talking about the harvest and stuff, I mean, we got the one of the highways, seasonal harvest, sixty dollars. You know, I mean, that, that happens every year that we have a seasonal harvest, you know, I just, sixty dollars, what's sixty dollars gonna do? I don't know. But we'll find out.
Yep.
Well, I think, heard their positions on that. So thanks for gathering that.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, again, I, Brian, I think it's a really good idea that each department, they could give us their updates, that they, they bring forward the fees associated to their department, that's why we're talking about it.
And, and Madam Chair, too, I think, as we found out in researching this, and I want to thank Colleen for her diligence in putting this together, we've gathered the information from the departments, and she has categorized it. But I think this, then, once you make a final improvement of it, we don't post these on our, on our website, and we will in the future. This would be a good thing to organize. So there's been some good that's really come out of this.
Good. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our committee reports, I just want to say quickly, thank you to all of those people that were part of the proclamation to support law enforcement last week. Clay County, along with the Joint Powers, had a press conference and also encouraged people to wear blue, and grateful recognition of what the law enforcement individuals do in our county. So thank you to them. And then, just a note, if you are planning on attending the intergovernmental retreat, to let Colleen know, so we can get those reservations completed. Commissioner Campbell, do you have a committee report?
I do. I did attend the, the press conference for the, where, you know, the recognition of law enforcement week and wear blue day, so I was happy to be there for that. And then the only other meeting that I had last week was a highway tracking meeting. One of the topics that was brought up is, there has been two million dollars awarded to Clay County through this STIP program, the federal aid, that will be available in two thousand and twenty-two. And our highway engineer assistant has proposed a couple of projects, and we're, we're just making sure that we're gonna get the best bang for our buck on those projects. So we asked for a little bit more information on that, and that'll be coming out as we move forward with updating our five-year plan with the next year. We had a couple of our motor graders that we had put out to auction, and it turned out that those numbers did not quite meet what we could get in trade-in, so we will be going through the trade-in process rather than the auction. And we, they did hire a new diesel mechanic. We were looking at opening bids for the five-mile Kasah nine paving project, the thirteenth, followed a couple weeks later by Glendon, but I believe we're gonna hold off on awarding anything on the Kasah project till the Glendon bids do come in. There is a, the Broadway Bridge on, that goes on North Fargo, is in need of some engineering work. And it's a, it's a pretty significant dollar amount involved there. I think they, Frank, I think they said like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand.
And they're looking for, for Clay County's share on that, because it's, we usually split between Cass and Clay, or Cass, or Fargo and Clay on those bridge projects. So we're, we asked for some more information on that as well. And then, I think Dave is gonna be coming forward to us on a new annual hauling permit for road, road construction materials. That's gonna be proposed to increase the weights a little bit, providing that the vehicles meet certain axle limitations, or requirements, I guess. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hingman?
Didn't have anything this last week.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, I too attended the highway tracking meeting that Commissioner Campbell just talked about, and covered that very well, with all that going on. After that, we had the Buildings Improvement Committee, and that has been discussed pretty well. Then, what Georgia just told us about, we discussed moving the people around, so that's what that meeting was about. Then I do, attended that Probst Field, the Law Enforcement Recognition Day. After that, let's see, Wednesday, Glendon had a hearing on that project, we're gonna do that this year. So I attended that hearing Wednesday night. I also attended the Glendon City Council meeting after that. Let's see if they had a city council meeting, I attended that. And also on Friday, I attended the Historical Society, had a recognition for their volunteers and stuff like that. And I was president for that, for that recognition also. So those were my meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Whalen?
I had a regional radio board meeting last week, and I was just in general business for the upcoming year, and discussion on some training opportunities, and finding board chair and vice chair for the year. And let's see, I had Greater Fargo-Moore Economic Development Corporation Executive Committee meeting, and had staff reports, and then we had a discussion with the search firm we hired to replace Jim Garten as the president. So that was it for me.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the Wear Blue event, had a soil and water conservation district meeting. It was the first of the year, so we went through the election of officers. Officers will stay the same for the next year. Committee assignments for the supervisors will also remain the same. We talked about the CAI grant application that was submitted, which is something they've really been working on, so I appreciate that that's moving forward. Also, the buffer initiative, there was thirty-five thousand dollars that was left that needed to be encumbered before the end of the year. They did work with the Buffalo Red Watershed to get that all placed in different areas. So I appreciate that they did that, because they would have lost that. It's a good work between them and, and the Watershed. Set the Tree Week for February twelfth through the sixteenth. And we had a little discussion, follow-up, in regards to the Watershed, for the buffer funds that Clay County will be getting, and how Brian had talked with Lori a little bit about how that will be billed to us, and just to clarify a few things for the Watershed, or the SWCD. So they'll continue to kind of keep track of what dollars that they're seeing from the administrative end, and kind of keep us in the loop as they submit those. The reregistration is in process for the county feedlots. Approximately a hundred and five feedlots have been in the county, probably will go down about five or six, so. And then they have a crops update today at the American Legion, it goes all day, so good work there. I had some follow-up discussion with, with Dave in regard to some MetroCog planning dollars that were left unspent from two thousand and fourteen. If you recall, I'd questioned him on that here. And those are planning-only dollars, and because part of Clay County is outside of their planning area, it kind of makes it tricky as to what we can use those funds for. So Dave is gonna continue to kind of work with the city of Morehead and see if there's some shared areas for planning we could possibly use that. But it is a local split on that, so we'll see what they're able to come up with. That concludes my reports. Yep, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. I, I forgot to mention that at our last construction meeting that we had for joint projects, we have been discussing to the expansion and remodeling project for the juvenile center. And I believe, Brian, we're looking at either February sixth or the thirteenth, that we're gonna have construction engineers are gonna come to us. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I thought it was the thirteenth.
So, and I think we're gonna be looking at, at both a, a better idea of the project cost of the expansion, as well as they will be giving the board an update on, on the current projects. But, Brian, I, I just noticed now that on February nineteenth, it's a holiday for Clay County, and we're scheduled for a jail construction meeting that day, so we'll probably have to look at moving that to the Friday before or something, whatever we can, if you can work on that, which, because right now, it's scheduled for the nineteenth, and we're not open. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it was last week that you folks had asked a question about the parcel breakdown for the abatement payback, and I have some information on that.
Thank you.
There's, there's two sheets here. I'll explain them once we get them up here. Okay, what you have before you, there, I don't want to say the same, but if you look down in the lower right-hand corner, there's the last three columns there, you'll see that one, the third column from the end is a hundred and fifteen million. That is, covers the two-year abatement term that Lorieus has compiled to pay back the abatement for that particular parcel. And the parcels are identified along the left column, and then what you'll, if you move over to your other document, it'll show sixty-seven million four hundred and fifteen thousand. That is for the single year that she pays out the abatement. So it's a little bit confusing, but I think it's certainly accurate in what we're looking at, is because she is paying that out over a hundred and fifteen million projects, valuations within that two-year period. But then, if you go to the other one, she's only covering that single year, and so it's basically half. It's very, very close to half. So, and then you had asked, it would be nice to see that broken down by jurisdictions. And if you go up there, you'll see that it's broken down by year, and you'll see what Moreheads is inclusive of, and then it goes to Barnesville, then Dilworth, and Holly on it. And what also then, and Lori put this together, so I'd like to thank her for that, compiling that information. And then, also, Mark Sloan, GIS, was listening to your question, and he compiled a map here, and that's what I'm trying to straighten out. But if you're, if you like visuals, this is the map of Dilworth, where these abatements apply, and Holly and Barnesville.
That's helpful. Thank you.
And, and that, that, I think that really helped out, showing kind of where the growth had taken place. And because, Commissioner Gross, you can really identify this up in Dilworth, where the growth has taken place.
Now, if you look at this morning's paper, you're gonna see that there's a hundred and fifteen more lots that were just gonna become available this year. So that's gonna help with the growth.
So if you'd like a, a map of this, you can see, we take these, or I can certainly ask Mark to make some more. And then, of course, this is Moreheads by itself. And I guess, we're doing a presentation on this rather than just, probably that's what we should have done, we should have. Here's, here's Moreheads' growth, and where it's taken place. So you've got the numbers on the sheets, and, and then you've got the visual here, so it can kind of identify that it's, and it's no surprise to anybody, but isn't this where the new school is? You can see what schools do to growing properties. And I don't know what's all down here, just new development and blue stem down in here and different things, so.
Very helpful. Thank you very much. Commissioner Campbell, do you have a question?
No, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And it, you know, oftentimes, it's important for us to reflect and maybe look back on decisions and why we do things, and to show why they were good. And, and, you know, this shows that in the past two years, with having these incentives in place, Clay County has, has seen a hundred and fifteen million dollars worth of new construction. And that's, that's a good deal.
Not insignificant.
That's, that's very significant. And, and certainly, we're, we're paying out for a short-term basis to those folks, but after two years, they're, they're on, they're helping everybody else pay all these bills. So it's, I think this is really good news. And I'm sure that this program is working well. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Any other questions on that, or comments, or, okay. And, Madam Chair, to continue, the legislative conference, I thank you all for getting back to us in regards to making reservations for that. And that is going to be February twenty-eighth and March first, so we have made reservations for Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, and the twenty-eighth, and for the three that are attending that. And we'll put that on the, on the upcoming events on the back as well. And then.
Just a moment, we have a comment.
Yeah, I hate to interrupt you again, but I, I wonder, I wonder if, if we should invite this year Kirk to attend.
Oh, I'm sure he plans to attend.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it's a significant, valuable year.
Yep, 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 yep. Oh, yeah. No, I'm sure he's.
Okay, I just, I know you mentioned three of us going, but I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I attended highway tracking, it's already been covered in depth. Same with the Campus Improvement Committee, that's when we talked about fish prices and things. And then we got serious about trying to tighten down on those numbers, because we needed to move along quicker on that. I had an appointment with the Greater Grand Forks, our Greater Grand Forks, Greater Fargo-Moorehead Economic Development Commission consultants that were looking at writing the, the advertisement for selecting their next executive director. And I guess I spent about an hour with two of them. And we had also a follow-up land management committee meeting, and I've talked about those before. And we solidified a, a move date for getting some remodeling and things down on second floor. It was mostly electrical, but we're also putting that in the carpeting and the, and doing the paint, because we're moving some workstations around and things. And the Capital Improvement Committee talked about those as well. I did, I'm a member of the Chamber of Congress Public Affairs Committee, and I did attend the State of the City address. and I did attend the State of the City address last Thursday morning. That was very interesting. So if you guys wanna do that, you really don't have to speak, because they put together videos, and that's what they showed, threw out of the fore, showed videos instead of addressing the crowd. So it was good, it was good educational. And then on Friday morning, I had a diversion administrative advisory meeting, and frankly, I, I guess I thought I would have some updates to you, but they're still waiting for the reports from the Governor's Task Force and, and things, to have too much report on there. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything further? No, we are adjourned.